Next item, please.
Recognition and acknowledgements of donations.
Good evening. We have one donation tonight. A donation of $25,000 has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for robotics and elementary steam labs. Thank you.
Well, that certainly is a very welcomed donation. One is enough. Thank you. Next item, please.
Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meetings. Policy Committee meeting, June 24th, 2019, Board Report 1901. Regular P-12 meeting, June 24th, 2019, Board Report 1902. And Dearborn Board of Education, regular P-12 meeting, wait a minute, sorry, wrong line. Read the headline of the next page. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So moved.
Is the board? Are there any corrections to be made? All those in favor?
Aye.
Would you please attach a unanimous roll? Next item, please.
Special reports.
So we have Dr. Patterson who's coming up for NWA. Jim was testing me on, both of us on that one.
I'm letting you do it.
You're putting headlines over the reader.
Okay, measuring student growth. Dr. Patterson.
So, good evening. The last few years during the summer, I've shared some similar data with you, and I think this year you'll find it just as promising as it's looked the last few years. As you know, we take a look at many different data points from K through, as we just took a look college, to see how well our students are doing. NWA is something that we've been using for the last five years, and we moved to this five years ago because it replaced many tests that were given throughout the system. It was an effort to kind of reduce the testing, and it's also something that gives us immediate feedback that our teachers use to help find out what are some of the next instructional steps for students. And so this is something that we give K through eight district-wide, and it's one of our common metrics that we use to kind of see how our institution is doing in those grades.
And we do this three times a year.
Three times a year. And just to remind you a little bit about the test, what this graph shows you is one student's growth from first grade through third grade. And as you just mentioned, this is an assessment that's given in fall, winter, and spring, which is why you see so many points here. And this is an example of a student that was in the fall of their first grade year, doing in like the lower section of their peer groups, but by the time that they were in third grade, they were doing in the very upper level of their peer group. But the students get back a score, which is in the 100s to 200 ranges, and this measures on a kind of continuum kindergarten through actually up to high school in terms of their academic achievement on just like one numeric scale. And so it's an easy way to show how a student is growing over time. And this kind of paints a good picture of how we can see that with our students that have been here through all of those years. The other thing that this assessment is, is it's computer adaptive, and it's meant to kind of level itself out at the student's academic level. So it's about 50 questions, and it's meant to take about an hour. And this is something that we give in reading and math, and then in third grade, the students begin to take a language and a science test as well. A few other things I just wanted to mention is that the teachers don't get back just one overall score, but they also get back a series of sub-scores that can give the teacher some information about where some strengths and weaknesses in that child might be. So this is showing that for this particular student, they had a range of scores in different reading areas. One area of focus, they say, is instructional text, language, craft, and structure, and then it gives them a list of some skills that they think the student knows pretty well, might need a little bit of reinforcement, and then some next step. So these are some reports that our teachers use throughout the year to kind of help drive the instruction for each of their students, and it's very individualized. All right, so in terms of our student outcomes, NWEA measures where the student is in a point of time, but also how much they're growing over a series of times. And as in the past few years, our students are growing above the NWEA norms in all subjects and grades. And we also see this growth consistent among some of our subgroups as well, in terms of our English learners and students with disabilities. So I'll quickly go over and show you what those numbers look like. So I have a few graphs that look like this, and what you'll see is going from left to right, you'll see kindergarten through eighth grade. Those are the grade levels that we administer the reading test in. And then the purple boxes at the bottom are what NWEA says based on their national representative sample of like hundreds of thousands of students, what a typical kindergartner or first grader would grow in terms of points on NWEA over the course of the year. So in kindergarten, typically from where a student starts in the fall to where they end up in the spring would be 17 points. In first grade, it would also be 17, and then in second grade, we expect our students to grow a little smaller on NWEA, so it goes down to 14. And as the students progress, their growth typically goes down a little bit, and that's just the way the test is designed. Our students, as you can see, which are in the blue bubbles, are consistently higher than that growth in all grade levels. So in kindergarten, our students on average grow 25 points. In first grade, they grow 23, and in second grade, 17. The light bubbles just behind there are just to show you that this isn't just a one-time occurrence that we've seen. Those are the last few years of growth, and it's been consistently higher than what we typically see in NWEA. So when our students come in, often it might be, you know, lower than what we, you know, might want, but the growth that we see throughout the school year is something much higher than we see at the national average. So if we take a look at math, you will see that that's consistently higher. One thing that I would say that I think is very promising about this graph is we did also implement a new math curriculum last year, and we saw our growth consistently as high, if not higher, in many of our grades. And typically, when you implement a new program, you often see like an implementation dip. The students were given exposure to a lot more rigorous curriculum, but we still saw very high growth in NWEA. And then in terms of language, you'll see, again, this is a third through eighth grade test, and then in science, again, similar high growth in grades three through eight. And as I mentioned before, when we take a look at our economically disadvantaged students, they also grow higher than the NWEA norm. And when I took a look at our students with disabilities and English learners, again, they grow higher than the NWEA norm. So this is something we see across all of our subgroups. And then just a few updates moving forward. NWEA implemented something like this about a year ago, but they've made some updates to it. Sometimes on a multiple choice test, you'll see a student just kind of like trying to get through the test kind of quickly. They've put in something into the algorithm on the computer where if they see a student answer a question very quickly, like three questions in a row, it will pause it. The teacher's screen gets notified saying that the student might be kind of going kind of quickly. It allows the teacher to go over there and say, hey, it looks like you might be guessing a little more. You might just like slow down and kind of counsel that student, and that will do that a few times throughout the test. So that's kind of a way for the teacher to get some instant feedback to see how the student is doing, because we do want the information to be accurate, because we do use these to help the students. And then one thing that we'll be doing is, we do want to make sure that we have consistent testing between fall, winter, and spring across all of our schools. We are very concerned that we don't want to overtest students, and we're concerned about the time that students are taking testing. And we do notice that in the springtime especially, students take a little higher than average on the assessment, and so we want to make sure that we just have a good protocol into place to where it's taking, you know, the amount of time that it should, because we also have other spring testing that happens as well. So that was the information I had to share tonight. I think it's very positive. Any questions?
Trustee Thorpe.
You mentioned the springtime, and it's something I've heard from parents for a number of years, is just test fatigue, not just the parents, the teachers as well. Since this is a test that we choose to give, and the state is mandating other tests, what else are we, what can we do to try to reduce the stress and the fatigue that the students have in the springtime especially?
Well, one thing that we did do in this last year, actually, I believe the last two years, is we did change the timing of both assessments so that they didn't overlap entirely. So M-step is an assessment that we give in grades three through eight, and it typically happens between mid-April through kind of mid-May. And the recommended window for NWEA was kind of in the middle of that, to where students were taking both tests within the same time period in certain grades. We moved the NWEA window until after M-step testing and opened it up until the end of the year, just so that there wouldn't be that double testing. And again, I think that with adding some testing protocols to try to make sure that the timeframe does not extend beyond an hour, that will also help a little bit with testing. But it is something that we have continued to use, and we find that spring testing is important just because it gives us that full year's snapshot, and it is something that we use as a measurement tool, not just for students, but also to see how our programs are doing.
One other comment I had, and this was something that we did at the last board meeting, but you bring up like the M-step right now. With the testing window that we had from the state, was it the M-step that was supposed to happen the day we came back from spring break?
That was the SAT.
The SAT. And we made the choice that we were going to bring everyone back on the Monday instead of the Tuesday. Lose a day of spring break. I happen to think it's probably a good idea, because you don't want to go into the SAT after being on spring break for a week and a half, and you'll get a day back in June. So it's not all lost. But it's good to see that we're doing that.
Trustee McDonnell.
When I'm looking at the assessments, are these assessments used also to assess the effectiveness of instructor of teachers?
For, NWEA can be, but in the last year, we moved to a different model for evaluation that gives some choices in what data is used. Also, with the switch of the NWEA assessment window to the last part of May, spring testing results aren't available in time by the time the evaluations are due. Fall to winter growth can be used, but we moved to something called Student Learning Objectives, and that, the intent for that was to allow teachers to have some flexibility in what data is used for that part, because the state moved from having 25% of the evaluation be based on student data and student growth to 40%. And so there is some autonomy in terms of what measures are used. So there can be a pre- and post-test that's measured, and we encourage teachers to use them as a professional learning community, to where a grade-level team would use a similar assessment, so they could use the results to kind of drive those conversations throughout the year. So it is something that can be used, but we try to provide flexibility in terms of other measures that could be used as well.
Student growth was the first thing I thought of when you were talking about that with my question, but I was also thinking about, if you're comparing like students in a particular classroom on this, could you or have you determine where perhaps a particular student or a particular teacher may need a little professional development in a particular area, if you're comparing students in her class, classroom? Do you understand my question?
Yeah, and I-
Would that be possible, or does that even-
And that is something that, after fall, winter, and spring testing, I know that the teachers have conversations with students in terms of setting learning goals and how they're doing, but most schools also have conversations from principals and teachers and collaborative conversations in terms of how do the results look, where are some areas of strength, where are some areas of weaknesses, and those are some things that come out of those conversations. So when, since it does break it down into several areas in terms of like, so for math, it will look at algebraic reasoning, numerical analysis, you can look for some of those areas of strength and weaknesses as well.
That's what I was thinking. If there's like a specific that you may see that maybe a teacher could be more effective with a little extra training in one particular area.
Yeah, and there are some reports that come out of NWEA that break it down in that regard.
All right, thank you. Trustee Melzett.
You mentioned that the teacher, there is a choice when given which exam or which student achievement or student growth path do you take? So does the teacher make that choice, or does the administrator make that choice?
It's meant to be made in collaboration with the administrator. So it's something that can be proposed by the teacher, and then through discussions with the administrator, you know, it would be approved as a cooperative effort between the two of them. So, and part of that is just to make sure that the targets make sense and that it's kind of clear, because it's meant to be used as an area of feedback for the teacher as well. So for example, if the teacher wants to focus on informational writing as part of their goal area for the year, they could give a writing pre-test in the fall, see where their students are doing, kind of set individualized targets for those students, and then in the springtime, again, give another piece of informational writing, and then see how well those students grew, and they can use that as part of their growth evaluation. And that would be a collaborative conversation with their evaluator.
Okay. And as far as student achievement data, do we, can we compare student growth in our district versus others with NWEA?
NWEA doesn't make other district data available. They have the norms available. One thing that I actually did request from them is a similar schools report, where they will provide some information back to us on other districts, not just in Michigan, but around the nation that are very similar to ours. And that's some information that I'll hope to get this fall.
The last question that I have is, kindergarten would take the same amount of time testing than a first grader?
Actually, for kindergarten, it, the average is more around 30 minutes. And it does go up a little bit in higher grades. And in kindergarten through second grade, the assessment is read out loud to the students. They have headphones on, but it's roughly on average around a 30-minute assessment in kindergarten. And then, once you get up to around second grade, then it goes up to around a 60 to 70-minute average.
I just want to say that I've sat in a few meetings with our, my son's teacher, and they're calling the data meetings, where they explain where the entire class, how they did, and then they give individual reports to the parents as far as how the students did, and I think that's very valuable information. However, in the M-step, you only see the score the next year. So I would hope that the state would, to adopt a similar model that the NWEA, where it gives you instant or close to instant feedback. And that would cut down also the number of tests that our students have take, which are still at high.
Yeah, and that was actually the previous intent of Brian Wiston, was to move to an NWEA-like model, but that was something that unfortunately did not get approved through the state. They did allow us to get some reimbursement for funds to use NWEA, because he thought it was such a valuable tool. He wanted that to be available for districts, so that's something that has definitely helped over the last few years. But unfortunately, at this point, it doesn't look like an assessment like that will be the replacement for M-step, at least in the near future.
Thank you. Thank you, Doctor.
Okay, well, yeah, I got a couple of questions. I got a couple of questions, too. If, my recollection of what I saw, since we don't have our computers in front of us tonight, there, the fall scores show a significant drop from the prior year's spring starting leave point, let's say.
Yes, yes.
When they take, when they go in into the fall of the following school year, are they starting, are these tests adding on to the knowledge, is this indicative of the summer drop, or is this because you're now testing something completely differently in the next school year cycle to see that growth?
There are a few places where a student actually does switch to a different kind of like content area for NWEA. So there's an assessment for K through two, and that assessment is read to the students. And then in second grade, they transition to one that's read to them, and that's kind of a consistent item bank that gets pulled for those students for two through fifth grade.
Okay.
And then six through eighth grade is another kind of unique item bank with a little bit of crossover between those two. So within those grades, they have the option of seeing any of that material pulled from second through fifth grade, depending on where that student is. So if they're a fourth grader, but they happen to start missing quite a few questions, it will start leveling down to pull in some earlier understanding for those students.
So it's intuitive for each individual student and geared towards their-
Yes, yeah. So it's meant to be the same experience for the student, fall, winter, and spring. Typically, what we do see from spring to fall is going to be a measurement of the summer learning loss. And if you take a look at NWEA's norms, they see that across the nation, and it's something similar that we see in our students as well. And that's one of the things that we use to also take a look at. How are some of our summer programs are doing as well? Did it start to bite into a little bit of that summer learning loss? And that's another useful tool that we use it for.
That was kind of where I was going with that, then. Can we correlate that with the ones who are getting the supplement-
Yes, yes.
-education during the summer and seeing something different? Okay, all right.
I just wanted to comment, too, when you were talking about the NWA, and appreciate the excellent presentation, just that unfortunately, with what Superintendent Wiston, late great Wiston, was trying to do, unfortunately, I got tied up in political, you know, issues at the state level, and it continues. That's why I'm excited that I'm going to be on the MASAs Superintendent Association Board. I've been very active advocating and lancing. This is going to give me more of an ability to advocate. In fact, they asked me about that, because I do have expertise in school accountability, and I'm likely going to serve on that subcommittee for the state. But again, you know, just like the lame duck, they change the assessment, and they keep changing it. So, you know, appreciate the comments. And I think the one consistent assessment we've had that hasn't changed has been the NWEA. So that's something we can look at year to year and compare. And the nice thing with NWEA, and I think Trustee Melzett, you said it, is it's really to help that individual student, because we get the results right away, we get the feedback, and we move forward. And then I think with the evaluation, we're trying to do that multiple measures approach for the teacher, so that we're not just focusing on one assessment. So thank you, Dr. Patterson.
And while you're serving on this board, I've heard rumors over the years, and I've had a lot of people approach me about this as well, that they feel that some of these assessment companies and these tests that are sold to districts through the state, you know, systems, it's more of a financial decision rather than a, one that's made on the basis of the best interest of the student. And if you can suss that out.
Yeah, yeah.
Because, you know, there's been a lot of criticisms that this is just putting money in somebody's pocket to sell these tests, rather than to, and since we see that the M-step seems to have no real value to us at the district level as opposed to a state, you know, tool, you do start to wonder who's really benefiting from some of these options.
And I could just comment a little bit on that. So in 2013, the state was supposed to be going to the Smarter Balance Assessment, and they scrapped it. And why'd they do it? Because there was some opposition in the legislature, and it had to do with which companies were getting the different, and so they quickly put this M-step together, and some of you might remember, the hours it would take, seven hours for a student to take the assessment. And so the one thing Dr. Patterson and I have both asked for, the MEAP used to have this, is validity and reliability tests over time, studies, to say that this is a reliable assessment, and we were yet to see it. So hopefully, you know, we will advocate, we'll continue to advocate for our students. Having said that, you know, we're accountable to make sure our students are successful, and we appreciate the support of the board and the community for that.
All right, then. Thank you so much, Dr. Patterson. Next item, please.
Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who are assigned in by 7:10 by submitting a blue card to the secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. The board president reserves the right to limit times. Starting with the agenda items, first, teacher reassignment at Deval, Mrs. Ann Jacks.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
If you can stand in front of the microphone, thanks.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I am a grandparent and a godparent in the Deval School District. I am here to request that the Human Resource Department recalculate their formula that they are using at the Deval Elementary School regarding a first-grade teacher. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next is Mrs. Bianca Woodruff, wishing to speak to the board about teacher reassignments at Deval.
My daughter is going into first grade this year at Deval. The teacher in question and my daughter have become very close this past year. She was leaving kindergarten, obviously. At the Edison Sale in June, she walked by our house and saw my daughter, and stopped to talk to us and bought lemonade from her lemonade stand. She spent about 10 minutes out of her day just talking to her, and I could see the bond they shared already. This teacher is compassionate and such a gem. We're crossing our fingers to have her as a teacher for first grade. I think it would be a huge loss to Deval if she was transferred. Please consider the relationships and work that she has put in so far at Deval before you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mrs. Catherine Dagger, wishing to speak to the board about surplus teachers.
Hello. Good evening. Thanks for letting me speak. My name is Catherine Dagger. I'm a born and raised Dearbornite. I have three small children, and two of which attend Deval. So you can ask any Deval family what we love about our school, and I promise you, somewhere in their response, it will be something about our community. Being the smallest school in Dearborn, it's quite amazing how supportive and uplifting our families, staff, and children can be for one another. We have 13 families here tonight, and I have seven extra letters from parents that could not make it tonight regarding this same situation. So Deval is the smallest school out of the 33 in Dearborn, and last year, we had a little less than 300 students. There were 18,000 in our city. So I understand that our numbers are low, and so we're getting surpassed. Our teacher, or I'm sorry, our school has 12 teachers. Out of the 12 of them, one came to every single PTA meeting. Two participated on our board and in the curriculum committee. Four teachers tutored, but one did multiple groups and have for at least three years. One missed less than two days of school last year. One found interesting ways to benefit our kids, such as programs that get every kid in her class a new book every month for free, or applying and winning every art year so far to get her entire grade to the zoo for free with bus and lunch included. One has stepped up for morning pledge when our principal has not been there, and one knows every single kid and sibling and parent by name and can tell you. She really prides herself on that. And I could honestly go on and on about all of her accomplishments, but the point is, is that she was the one that was chosen. She's the one that's a really big asset to our school and to our community. Sorry.
Take a breath.
Okay. So I'm standing here before you, asking you to please reconsider. I know this is a tough decision that you have to call, but that's why we voted you to be on our board, because we know that you have our children's best interests in mind. I know a surplus is inevitable, but reconsider this teacher. I'm not trying to put our other teachers down. They are phenomenal. In fact, some, most of them are seriously up to here, but this one, she's higher, and all of her colleagues would attest for that. Every teacher that was surplus this year was based off their attendance, except her case. So let me remind you, she took two and a half days off last year, and those, she was in the hospital. So when I posted on Facebook that I was going to be attending tonight, trying to make a difference, I had a retired Dearborn teacher respond, "Parent complaints won't change it." So maybe me standing here won't make a difference. Maybe everyone who is here in honor of Deval and her are wasting their time, but we don't see it like that, considering we all know she is above certain teachers at our school based off credentials, seniority, attendance, volunteering, honestly, the list goes on. So as a parent, I'm confused on how this happened. I took it upon myself to read about the policy that Mr. Cedarland defined, but I would like to mention it again. One, the superintendent or designee will determine factors that are in the best interest of the students and educational programs in Dearborn. Two, Section 9 and 10 of the Board of Education Policy, 31- Two, Section 9 and 10 of the Board of Education Policy, 3131. So in the event of a tie in the effectiveness rating of a teacher, so my example, these two teachers being effective, a tie will be broken based on the criteria listed from A through F. So I could read you verbatim, but we just heard it all, and let me paraphrase. A through F does not pertain to Deval, I'm sorry, A through C does not pertain to Deval. D, the teacher's attendance record, exclusive of any absences taken under FMLA. So let me point out again, she took two and a half days off. This is where all the other surplus has stopped, but not with Deval. E, the attendance of professional development days. She has attended every single one, and she also is scheduled to attend the one next month. F, this does not pertain to Deval again. Lastly, G, seniority, seniority. So she does have seniority over teachers at Deval. So those are the laws. We heard it now twice tonight. So although she didn't, nothing about this talks about advancements or certifications. So although she did earn her master's degree in less than one and a half years, and has offered to get her bilingual certification within a year, she was denied. So I'd like to ask again, was she effective? Does she fall within these laws and this criteria? So I want to leave you with our pledge that we recite every morning at Deval, and I truly believe that she lives by it, and what all Deval parents hope is instilled into our children for life, and hopefully you live by these too. I am honest and courteous, I respect myself and others, I am responsible, I do my work every day, I have integrity, I make the right choices, I value diversity, and I'm a peacemaker. I'm a good citizen, and I'm a lifelong learner. So Deval may be small, but we are so mighty. So thank you for listening, and I hope you reconsider.
Thank you.
Next, Robin Mackled, wishing to speak to the board about teacher reassignments at Deval.
Good evening, thank you for giving me a chance to speak also. And I just want to acknowledge all the families that are here in support of the certain teacher. None of us are here for the free air conditioning, although we don't have power. It does feel nice, I'm not going to lie, but...
We'll let you enjoy it.
We were, because we didn't have any at our central office.
So we are all here in support of a very special teacher. I mean, I don't think I can say it any better than Catherine. I will, I have a letter actually that has been signed by 50 Deval families. I'm getting texts as I sit here of people who want to add on to the letter saying, "Please add me." I will give each of you a copy after the meeting, so that you can read for yourself all the points. I'll go through a few of them. This teacher is kind, passionate, highly effective in her classroom. She is one of the most requested teachers at Deval. She has outstanding classroom management. She is organized, has an amazing ability to connect with students that have difficulties. She researches and implements interventions, figuring out whatever it takes to meet the needs of each student in order that they may learn effectively. She is renowned for knowing every one of our 260 students by name, being recognized by name by adults, gives students a sense of validity, that they are noticed and that they matter. I think that is very important. She is beloved by her students, parents, colleagues, and administration. And one of the most wonderful gifts that she gives to our school is her time. She spends so much time. When we had a student, a kindergartner, in the 2014-2015 school year who became sick with terminal brain cancer, this teacher, in her first year as a teacher, took it upon herself to school this child, homebound, would go to her house at least twice a week. She became very close, very supportive with the family. She organized two fundraisers. She, recognizing that the little girl would not survive to her next birthday party, this teacher organized a birthday party in the middle of summer at the school, getting donations of inflatables, princess characters to come visit, gathered all these students from the school in the summer, which is not easy to celebrate this little girl's life. She was supportive to the family up until the little girl passed away, and then the family has had another baby. When that baby was born, she was actually present at the hospital when that baby arrived. This is a very special teacher, not just because of those emotional arguments. She organizes and runs our literacy night. She organizes and runs our math night. She organizes our school's science fair. She organizes our annual ABC countdown that the kids love and enjoy as we count down the days to school. She works with another teacher to plan and execute March's reading month. She's a tutor. She stands out as a grant writer. She has received over thousands of dollars in grants to our school. She is very, very important to our school. So I understand that budget cuts are a big concern. I understand economics, I'm a tax accountant, and I will continue to advocate to the state. I sent off two emails today. I sent my letters to my representatives, and I also sent my letter to the governor's office. But I also want to make sure that we are doing enough to stretch what we have. So I have a few questions. I know we talked about central office and whether cuts have been made there. I do follow all the administrative appointments notices, and I did notice in June that we had, our high school athletic directors became ADSA positions. So I'm wondering if those new positions entailed salary increases that could have maybe funded another teacher position? I don't know. I'm also just wondering if there are any other cuts to central office in general as far as positions. I just want to make sure that we're making the right choices. And then also in terms of the mathematical formula, Catherine kind of touched on seniority. And I want to understand, like, I think certifications come into play in seniority. Does it, is it actual certifications that have been achieved? Or is it something where a certificate, where someone has promised to achieve that certification? I'd just like to understand that, like, how that works in the formula. So that's, you know, it's near and dear to my heart, because my son is in one of the grade bands that will probably become a split class. And, you know, I, neither, none of my kids have even had Ms. Curb, the teacher in question, but I'm in the school all the time. I see what she does, I see the value that she adds to our school. And if you take this teacher away, you are ripping the heart out of our school. She is absolutely critical to our school. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and I know that we don't necessarily always respond, but I talked to President Pelichkov, and I can give you a few answers off the top of my head on some of those situations. Yes, so for the athletic director, it was pretty much a wash budget. It may have been, and I'd have to look at the specific numbers, but there were reductions of three positions. And the reason we did that was because of evaluations and things that the athletic directors have to complete. And so most districts, especially a district our size, had them as administrators. Now, that may have been a few thousand dollars more, but it definitely would not have been even like a half of a teacher's salary. And I could get, you know, we have specific numbers on what that would cost out of HR, but it pretty much was close to a wash, or maybe a little more, possibly. There were other cuts, and I don't have the numbers, but off the top of my head, we've had, you know, cabinet, and we've had assistant principals that, as I mentioned, were laid off, that weren't filled. And we've had other administration from central office, and I don't have the specific, but I could estimate, Tom, maybe seven to eight hundred thousand, when we look at all that off the top of my head, possibly. And again, don't quote me on that, I'm just giving a quick, but there were cuts, we have the specific data, Mr. Wall is very good at tracking it. And then as far as the formulas, yes, certification is, because it's based on state law. So certification, and Mr. Sederlin mentioned it, is number one. And then it is a numerical formula. We have, we're not really deciding, we have to just follow what the formula is. So we don't have any flexibility to change it. You know, now it was board-approved, we can't change it on individual situations. The board can always look at it long-term, but I'm going to tell you, our policy has been looked at across other districts, and the reason I know it in HR is very fair, and that, the reason we don't is because we don't want to pick and choose, we want to have a system in place. It is better than what it was, I believe, under the old system. And that's the other reason why our district, not all districts do this, but we invite the union to sit with us the entire time, making sure that the process is transparent. So we don't have any flexibility, neither does the board have any flexibility to make a decision on an individual layoff. We have to legally, by state law, follow the formula to the teeth, because otherwise we'd be violating both board policy and state law.
We would be taken to court if we were to deviate for one teacher.
And again, that...
Do you think there are patients that have actually been achieved, that have actually been...
Yes, yes, that's, yes.
By state law, it has to be, otherwise we're not in complaint.
Is that just a promise to achieve?
No, no. I mean, you can get, and I'll just use special ed, if it was special ed, you can sometimes get a temporary certificate from the state when there's a shortage, but other than that, you must be certified, and whether it's language arts, or math, or science, or whatever the certification is, if we don't, we're violating state law. And if we knowingly put someone in a non-certified area, we could, it's actually a penalty, potentially, from the state, so.
Mr. Sederlin, yeah, and we don't want to get too far off.
Let me clarify an issue, just so everybody understands how the rules work. We do have staff who are in the English Language Learners Department, and we hire those staff with the commitment to get the endorsement, and they have to take so many credits the first, second, and third year. It's a condition of their employment, so they are treated differently than an EL departmental position, even though it's a classroom teacher, would not be treated the same as someone who is not in the EL department.
But they're not certified for purposes of seniority, as in they're considered certified.
They're in the department, the department is the distinction that we draw.
What about the extended cabinet position as Director of Early Middle Colleges and College Partnerships? There was, I also noticed there was another position that was created last summer that was...
If you could, if you want to send those other questions, so that we can move forward with the rest of the speakers?
For sure.
Yes.
I'm not going to comment on the issue on hand, but the comment I heard earlier from a parent, that our voices don't count, don't ever, ever let anybody convince you that. Every one of us at this table sat in those chairs many years ago, myself a long time ago, but don't ever let anybody convince you, because it's your voices that tell us how to handle things. Please, don't ever give up on that.
Okay, Wood.
Next, Mrs. Cocodaro would wish to speak to the board about allowing a teacher to remain at Deval Elementary.
Hi, thank you for your time. I want to thank you for giving all of us this time to hear us out about our concerns regarding losing our teacher. Nervous, sorry.
It's just us.
We know your job is hard, and we appreciate the work you do in keeping our schools running. Hard decisions have to be made, and it can't be easy, and unfortunately, here we are, asking you to move heaven and earth, to work even harder to help us find a solution to our problem. I want to acknowledge that. The thing is, we simply can't lose her. I think the reasons why we feel this way are abundantly clear and very well articulated. I'm really happy that I spoke after Robin and Catherine, because they just, they said it all, right? And for the sake of brevity, I won't repeat my fellow Penguin parents, but I'll add my own personal experience. My daughter started kindergarten at Deval in the fall of 2016. We moved here from Louisiana one week before school started. We arrived not knowing a single soul, and after our house flooded and losing nearly everything. Our family had no bedding and no furniture, we had an empty house, and my daughter was starting school the next week. I can't effectively articulate the tragedy, loss, and vulnerability I felt at the time. My daughter's a highly sensitive child. These events left her confused and scared about her security and surroundings. It's not a great way to start your first year of school. Children need consistency, security, and a safe community to effectively learn. I have found all of those things, all of those needs have been met here in Dearborn at Deval. My daughter's teacher welcomed her. She has a calm, confident demeanor that buoys her students and their parents. Giving a thousand percent would be a great compliment to give a teacher, but with this teacher, she gives each kid a thousand percent. She's the exact teacher that my daughter needed, and she delivered her from emotionally floundering to flourishing. The immense relief to see that happen was immeasurable. What she gives to our school, she gives with her whole heart. She isn't doing her job, she's doing her life's work, and putting her heart into it, and it shows. Anywhere she works will benefit from having her as much as we do. I mean, that's the irony, it's like, she's going to go, she's surplus, she's going to go somewhere else, they're going to love her too. But that's not the point. The point is, we owe her the same diligence to keep her at Deval that she shows in making our kids' lives great. It's reciprocity, it's what's fair. She helped create the environment that anchored our children educationally, and we are all here rallying to keep her here anchored where she ought to be and where our kids need her to be. Please reconsider your decision. Your hard work as school board members isn't always acknowledged by parents. I don't show up here. You know, you guys deserve an applause, but, you know, it's not always acknowledged, but in this regard, you're a matter, but in this matter, your efforts in helping us keep her would cast a ray of light on our school, and our gratitude would be immense. And in closing, I know a lot of us, it's been talked about formulas and math, and, I mean, I got an A in algebra, but I lost a lot of handfuls of hair. And I know there has to be a formula, and formulas suck, and decisions have to be made, but in this situation, formulas seek a solution, and they have variables. In this instance, the answer was wrong, so we need to move a variable, and that's all we need to do here today. I know there's a budget shortfall, I know that surplusing has to happen, but in this one regard, I think that we can change this. I think that there's a variable, and that we can keep her. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, Mrs. Brandy Ahmed would like to speak to the board about bond approval.
Good evening, board members. My name is Brandy, I am a parent and mother here, and actually, Mr. Barry, you touched on everything that I had questions about, and I applaud the questions that you brought up, and I appreciate that, so thank you. I support this bond. I think investing in our schools is the most important thing we can do as residents. Not only does it, you know, pave the path of success for our children, but also invites other people to want to be residents in our city, so... And I would suggest, I know that there was a gentleman back here who said he would take suggestions. I know a lot of residents, my neighbor, one of them, you know, she's a little bit older and, you know, always complaining about the taxes going up, but she doesn't really understand where the money is going to. And I know that that was touched upon, and I think it's very important to break that down and show residents that, but also touch on the bonds that previously, and say, "This is what we did with this money." You know, this money went towards this school, we bought new windows, we bought, you know, we got a new roof, we got certain technology, we're updating technology for our students. So I just, thank you for touching on that, that's where my concern was, and I wish that state of Michigan, hopefully in the future, will, you know, support more for education and hopefully prevent such issues that are obviously happening with our schools, so it's very sad to see. And I'm happy to see the board, you know, trying to do the best that they can, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
People did not wish to speak but would like to make some comments. First, we had, and this is in regards to the Salina area. We had a rough year with short staff of custodians at Salina Intermediate. A suggestion is to please lessen the requirements for custodial staff, more people would apply, and more opportunities for employment would be available. And another issue at Salina, for both the intermediate and the elementary, is traffic during arrival and dismissal. We need school signs around the neighborhood, painted crosswalks would be helpful, and one-way traffic during arrival and dismissal times. And then another comment. Are parents allowed to opt their children out from taking the NWEA test? If so, will this hurt the school or district?
We don't have an opt-out, per se, but parents that do, because we are giving the test, we don't have alternative supervision. So in the, Dr. Patterson has dealt with that in a few cases, and basically, you know, we're, the NWA is not high stakes that the state's really looking at, it's more about helping the individual student.
It's for us, yes.
So it wouldn't benefit... So it, it, it wouldn't benefit to opt out, and it's not being used to penalize anybody. So our recommendation, and I see Dr. Patterson nodding, is that we take the assessment and we're using it to grow students. I think Trusty Mosip has mentioned that, so there's no formal opt-out. Have we had in some cases, I think, Dr. Patterson, we've had a few that have, have kind of asked for that, and our kind of position is that we don't have anywhere to supervise the students when the whole class is, you know, taking the, the assessments. That's how we've kind of dealt with those.
So how do we deal with, if, if a parent decides to opt out, do, does a child go to another class during that exam, or how does that happen?
So we have, we've had a handful of requests over the last year or so. We decided that the policy for NWEA opt-outs are the same that we would do for our, our state assessment opt-outs. We know that NWEA is a local assessment, it's something that we choose, and it's part of our own instructional programming, so if someone wishes to opt out of NWEA, it's up to the parent to provide the alternative setting for the student.
Likely to keep them home for that day of testing, or...
Or for that hour.
For that hour, yeah, bring them in.
We've had a handful of requests over the last few years, but it's not, hasn't been a very large number, and I believe that we had a board brief on that earlier this year as well.
I think parents need to realize that this test is not a high-stakes test in the, in the way that the, the M-step, or the MEAT, or the SAT, or any of those steps are, but this, this is only to gauge where your student is, and if they're learning, it's, it's to their benefit, but I would assume that those parents who either have a child who maybe is anxiety-driven and, and struggles with any kind of testing, we would have to look at how we assess that, that type of a student as an alternative to make sure that we're still giving those students the best tools and, and growth that they need to have, because their entire school career is going to be faced with testing at one level or another. These tests are not there to, you know, judge as much as it is just to gauge the, the student's learning patterns, so I, I hope that parents understand that we don't want it to be a stressful time for them, but one to help the student grow.
Right, and in most cases, typically, a conversation with the principal alleviates those concerns, and in many cases, I've gone out to schools to meet with the parents as well.
Right, it could just be not understanding what, what the test's purpose is. Yes, Trusty Berry?
Question, this will be the question for Dr. Maleko. If a parent does choose to opt out, is the NWEA, is that a requirement, or does it reflect on maybe if a student applies for a special program later on? Like, let's say for STEM or early college, or...
STEM, I believe, yes, it is one of the, so it would be, if they were applying, then that would be the requirement. I don't think, early college is no, because it's a lottery, so early college, it doesn't have any impact, but STEM would, I'm not sure Ms. Peterson, DCMST.
So STEM and DCMST do use some of those scores. STEM wholeheartedly uses those scores, and then for the early college, they have to be reading at a sixth-grade level, so they will end up taking a Lexile. NWA will give you a Lexile, but they'll, they'll take an additional one to, to be put into the lottery. And also, the high schools will use, use those if they have an honors course. They will look at PSAT and NWA. PSAT scores sometimes don't come in when they're starting their schedule for the ninth grade, so they are used, and they are used by teachers to group students in class. I mean, this is data and, and information that teachers use daily to make groups and to help instruction, absolutely.
When our parents make that decision, and they come to us, either at the building level or district level, are we advising them that this, this might happen?
Usually a conversation, as Dr. Patterson said, a conversation with the principal is really all that they need to realize, that this is not like the M-step where the data comes back so far away from when the student took it that it doesn't help us make instructional decisions, or Dr. Patterson will come out, or an exec, executive director if needed, but we recommend that they take the assessment because we use the information to help each student.
That's my question, are we telling the parents, are we using this information?
And, and our students know it, and our students often set goals, and, you know, we have a video game generation, and they like to see their scores go up, so, and set goals and, and plans for how to do that as well.
Thank you.
Sir, any other...
Can I make a comment since we're done with the cards? I'd like to thank all of the parents who came today and spoke. I, I honor your time as well, and I, again, having a teacher leave your building who is your favorite teacher is not the greatest news, so...
I think you guys should hear, she's done a lot for school.
I, I've read, I've read all of your letters.
Okay, Trusty Mosip, we're not, we're not gonna get into a back and forth.
Sure.
Okay.
I, I just want to thank the parents for, for coming out today, and definitely their input is, is highly considered.
Yes, I want, I want to thank all of you for, and for finding your way here. Now, now you know what to look forward to if you want to move your students into any of our early college programs as well on this campus, and it is a very unfortunate situation we are faced with, and I don't think any of us are happy that we're having to be in this position tonight, but I, I really appreciate, the board appreciates your coming to speak on behalf, and as parents, you're their best advocates, and we see that. Thank you.
Just one comment too, I'll just reiterate that and support it, and we appreciate, I can, I, I've received emails, and the board has received them from me, the passion for teaching and the profession, so, and I did see the emails that went off to the state, so we appreciate your advocacy, because I'm working very hard to advocate for students, so thank you, yeah.
We haven't, we haven't voted on it yet. That's coming up next. We, we're just getting done with blue cards. Hold on.